Bring a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sure, Reed.
Yes.
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 Yes, and motion carries. Recognition, proclamations, appointments, and presentations. Uh, we have a proclamation on National Safe Boating Week, which I'm gonna read today. So, whereas recreational boating continues to grow as a popular way for millions of Americans to relax with their families, and whereas increased public participation in this healthy outdoor sport has emphasized the need for greater attention to courtesy, safety, and education to minimize incidents which lead to boating mishaps. Whereas a significant number of boaters who lost their lives by drowning would have survived had they worn a life jacket. Whereas the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary, Lotilla 3725, Division 37, District 9, Western Region, which represents Calumet-Sag Channel and its Plains River, supports National Safe Boating Week in partnership with the U.S. Coast Guard and National Safe Boating Council, and provides boater safety education results in our waterways, providing a relatively safe and almost accident-free environment. Therefore, I, John Mahoney, as Mayor of the Village of Payless Park, do hereby support the goals of the Safe Boating Campaign, proclaim May 20th through May 26, 2023, National Safe Boating Week, Village of Payless Park, Illinois, and urge all residents to always practice safe boating practices while our lakes and waterways, while on our lakes and waterways. So, consent agenda, all items on the consent agenda are routinely brought forward at the direction of the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Item A, to approve payment of invoices on the warrant list dated May 8, 2023, in the amount of $125,084.16. Item B, to approve the supplemental warrant list dated May 8, 2023, manual checks, payroll, and recurring wire transfers, in the amount of $408,699.60. Do I have a motion for the approval of the second?
So moved.
Second.
Bring a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Mayor Mahoney?
Yes, and motion carries. Any items of old business to be brought before the councils? Bearing no such requests, I will move to information updates, public works, and streets, or recreation report. Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I have nothing on the agenda. I just have a ton of announcements. Uh, first and foremost, our Village Green Playground has been confirmed that everything will be delivered by August 1st, which means it will be installed before autumn in the park, as we first planned, so yay, we will have our new park.[304.83][304.83][applause] Um, so, I want to thank everyone that came out to our annual Arbor Day Celebration that happened yesterday at the center. I want to thank everyone that made a success. Uh, Dan Foster, our arborist, Tammy Brown, Joe Walters, they're here today, Stephen DeFalco, Recreation Director, he was there, Payless Park Garden Guild, Payless Park Library, also to Trinity Pierce of the Morton Arboretum for her presentation and guided walk, and of course Dave Sanders of the Center for opening their doors and hosting the event. Uh, it was a huge turnout, and it was a lot of fun. I actually made one of those clay things where you put dried flowers in it, and it dries in the sun, you make a little dish. It's kind of fun. So y'all missed out if you weren't there. Uh, but we also had our poster contest, and we had two big winners. This first one was Lila Brown. She's 10 years old, and that's Tammy's daughter. She won this one. And this one was Avery Carroll, and he's nine, and he also won. So those are our two big winners from the poster contest.[377.64][377.74][applause] Uh, tomorrow, the Village Green will be closed temporarily. Um, that's Tuesday, May 9th. Uh, they're installing the new irrigation system as part of our capital improvement projects for this year, so just be aware, no running around there tomorrow. Uh, our Payless Park Doggy Dash is just a couple weeks. That's Saturday, May 20th. Our registration cutoff was to guarantee that you get a racer shirt and a medal, um, but that doesn't mean you can't participate. You still can sign up using promo code dash 23 at checkout for 25% off your registration. So, um, you know, it's a one mile, or it's a 5K, which is like around three miles. I'm doing one mile, because I'm walking, I'm not running, my dog won't run that fast, but you don't have to bring your dog. You can just come alone, um, and then there'll be like a little Dog-a-Palooza afterwards, so you can check out treats and new things for your pets. Um, we'll have a number of, a limited number of shirts on sale the day of the race, in case you're interested in getting one, and, um, you, again, just a reminder, we'll have food vendors and a pup parade and all that, so please come out and join us, May 20th. Um, the Recreation Department will be hosting their annual Memorial Day Remembrance Ceremony on Monday, May 29th at 11:00 a.m., right out on the Village Green in front of the VFW Memorial, so please join us for that. And our summer brochure is now live on the Payless Park website, and physical copies are here at the Capter Center and at the Recreation Center. Uh, lots of new things for the kids and for adults, so please check out the brochure, and also don't forget to sign up your Kids for Kids Zone Summer Camp. We have four two-week sessions and a five-day or a three-day experience, and multi-session discounts are available, and the first session starts June 12th. So if you haven't figured out what you're doing to keep the kids busy for at least part of the day, every day during the summer, this is something to look into, so check all that out, and I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Building and Public Property Report, Commissioner Michael Wade.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Uh, real quick, if you hire landscapers to work on your house this spring and summer, please remember that they need to be registered with the Village of Payless Park. The two-page contract or registration form is to be filled out, certificate insurance submitted, as well as registration fee paid. Uh, we thank you for registering to work in the village. If you need assistance, just give us a call at 708-671-3733. Uh, permits, the Building Department processed 11 permits from April 19th to May 2nd, resulting in $19,406.80, bringing our fiscal year-to-date to $195,209.51. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Public Health and Safety, Commissioner Polk.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. We'll start with the Police Activity Report from the 24th of April through the 7th of May, the year of our Lord, 2023. We had 1,811 calls for service, so that's a little slower than typical, not by much, but enough to let people catch their breath. We had 21 citizen assist calls in addition to that, took an additional 14 case reports, had eight accident reports. Fortunately arrested neither any adults nor any juveniles, impounded no vehicles, made 86 traffic stops, 35 for moving violations, an additional seven adjudication tickets, and 53 speeding tickets. So that's what the Payless Park Police Department's been up to for the last couple of weeks. And then I just wanted to remind people, if we ever have another warm day again, um, that the Payless Park Police Department has been giving out helmets to local children as part of the National Children and Safety Program. The bicycle helmets are free to children in Payless Park, and they're being distributed during normal business hours, um, at the Police Department here, so if you're looking for a helmet for your child or your grandchild or somebody that looks like a child, uh, please feel free to come during normal business hours, and we'll see what we can do for you. Just want to remind you that, uh, head injuries and falls from bicycles are generally the main reason that children visit emergency rooms during the summer months, and, um, uh, every year in the United States, about 800 bicyclists unfortunately are killed, and another half a million end up in hospital emergency rooms. About two-thirds of the deaths and a third of the injuries involve the head, so wearing a helmet can significantly reduce that risk of head injury by as much as about 80%. So again, if you're looking for a helmet and you want your choice of colors, come early. Chief, I know you're back there somewhere. Anything else you want to add? Chief says no. Quietly.
Through the window.
It's kind of like, no. That concludes my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Accounts and Finance Report, Commissioner Reed.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I have no report, nor announcements this evening.
Thank you. That leads me to my report, and I do have, uh, several announcements. Uh, zoning board of appeals meeting will be held this Wednesday, May 10th, at 7:30 p.m. at the Capter Administrative Center regarding a request for variations from the requirements of Section 1268.2F side yards and Section 1268.2G rear yards to permit the construction of a new family residence at 11500 South Elbridge Avenue. The Historic Preservation Committee will not meet on Tuesday, May 16th, as there are no agenda items. The Library Board will hold their regular meeting on Wednesday, May 17th, at 5:00 p.m. in the library. The Payless Fine Arts Committee, uh, meeting is canceled for Thursday, May 18th. The next scheduled meeting is Thursday, June 15th. Uh, the Plan Commission meeting will be held on Thursday, May 18th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Capter Administrative Center regarding a request for a text amendment to Section 1280.08, nonconforming uses, exceptions of the Village Code. The proposed text amendment involves legal nonconforming uses and buildings located at Cock Hill and Ludwig Farm. A few more announcements. Payless Park Public Library, the Payless Park Public Library is where I began my public service here in the village as a member of the Library Board. Uh, many years ago, I know the importance of access to lifelong learning, and this is a great place to do just that. The library offers a variety of events and services so that your family can stay connected, not only to knowledge, but to the fellowship and social interaction that is important in any community. Uh, more information can be found at thepaylessparklibrary.org. Um, you can also subscribe to, uh, email newsletters that the, uh, Payless Park Public Library, uh, puts out on a periodic basis. Um, it's a great welcoming place, uh, to, uh, relax and enjoy a book, and I plan to do that a little bit more in the future. Outdoor recreation, throughout my time as mayor, I've talked about how fortunate we are to live in such a beautiful, natural environment. I've always encouraged, uh, residents to go outdoors, keep active, and take advantage of the recreational opportunities around us. Uh, we have access to the Cal Sag Trail for running, walking, and biking. Cock Hill Golf and Country Club has some of the amazing, most amazing golf courses in the Midwest, if not the country. Equestrian opportunities are nearby for your family to enjoy as well. The Forest Preserve District of Cook County has always been a jewel in our area. In recent years, the Forest Preserve District has made stunning improvements to their facilities. They consistently create special events and opportunities for all ages to learn about nature, enjoy the outdoors in every season. A list of outdoor recreation opportunities and events can be found at fpdcc.com. So, um, I thank everyone for being here. I'm gonna make this very short. What? No, I got the...
Oh.
No, I got this.
Sorry, my bad. Oops, I thought you were jumping the guy.
You don't have your chance.[917.64][917.74][laughter]
Strike one.[925.64][925.74][laughter]
So, I just want to say that, uh, I'm really grateful for the honor and privilege to serve you all the past 16 years. Um, you know, I felt a little sadness this morning when I woke up, uh, and I, and I am elated. But, you know, after doing something for, uh, over 16 years, uh, there's a little bit of a loss, but I leave with the confidence that the Village Council, under leader, under the leadership of Nicole, Mayor Nicole Milovich Walters, uh, and the help of the great staff that we have here at Payless Park, uh, will accomplish great work in the next four years. Uh, and that gives me great comfort, and I just want to say thank you and God bless.[990.84][991.04][applause] Manager Beam.
I have no report this evening.
I have one item for the council's consideration tonight, and that is a fiber optic service agreement from urbancom.net, fiber operations. They are operating under the, as an entity of Chicago Southern Fiber Network, which is under the auspices of the Cook County, um, government. Cook County collaborated to put the, the system of fiber optic network together in the Chicago Southern Region to service public safety, municipal facilities, and 17 communities. Back in November of, uh, '22, the Village Council approved right-of-entry agreements. I'm telling everybody else to turn around, and I didn't. So, in '22, the Village Council approved the, uh, right-of-entry agreements, which put fiber into this building, as well as our other buildings. Uh, so, in essence, this is an opportunity for the village to not only save some money on our monthly costs, uh, over our current vendor, AT&amp;T, for our backup, but also provide us a better reliable system for our public safety entity, especially the police department and their connections, uh, through a switch, uh, with Cook County, which is our agency agency. So, uh, the other two entities, we were studying to see where the cost savings can come from, but this is definitely a cost savings. Uh, this agreement would be for $895 a month, as opposed to our current $1,824 a month. Uh, so, and it also gives us that opportunity to better connect our, uh, public safety network with the county dispatch operations, so I make the recommendation that the Village Council, uh, approve the service agreement.
So I move to approve the fiber optic service agreement from urban.com, urbancom.net, fiber operations for the Capter Administrative, as well as the Police Center, 8999 West 123rd Street, at a monthly rate of $895 for a period of 60 months.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, and, um, questions or concerns? Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Milovich Walters?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries. So, the next item is the election results, and I'm gonna turn that over to Manager Beam again.
My job this evening is to, uh, read off the, uh, results, the official results of the April 4th, 2023 Consolidated General Election. The Cook County Clerk, having completed a canvas of all votes cast for mayor, Village of Payless Park, hereby certifies the following vote totals: Nicole Milovich Walters, 854 votes, Annette Leo McCarthy, 723 votes. This election having been certified as one to be elected results in Nicole Milovich Walters being elected. Cook County Clerk, having completed a canvas of all votes for clerk, Village of Payless Park, hereby certifies the following vote totals: Marie Aragoni, 1,242 votes. This election having been certified as one to be elected results in Marie Aragoni being elected. The Cook County Clerk, having completed a canvas of all votes cast for Commissioner, Village of Payless Park, hereby certifies the following vote totals: G. Darrell Reed, 810 votes, Daniel Polk, 959 votes, Michael Wade, 994 votes, Rebecca Patan, 1,041 votes. This election having been certified as for to be elected results in G. Darrell Reed, Daniel Polk, Michael Wade, and Rebecca Patan being elected.
So, I think now we go to the installation of the newly elected officers by the, uh, Honorable Judge Anne Helen Dimakopoulos.[1269.54][1271.74][applause]
If you want to take up there, and I think we're gonna call the commissioners up.
We're gonna do the commissioners first. So we have these, uh, G. Darrell Reed, Dan Polk, Mike Wade, and Marie Aragoni. Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. Rebecca Patan, sorry. Um, I think right here would be fine. You have to go forward.
That's weird.
So each of you could please raise your right hand, and repeat after me using your name. I, mistake your name.
I, G. Darrell Reed.
Having been elected to the office of Commissioner.
Having been elected to the office of Commissioner.
For the Village of Payless Park, Cook County, Illinois.
For the Village of Payless Park, Cook County, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And will uphold and enforce the statutes of the State of Illinois.
And will uphold and enforce the statutes of the State of Illinois.
And the resolutions and ordinances of the Village of Payless Park.
And the resolutions and ordinances of the Village of Payless Park.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Commissioner.
Of the office of Commissioner.
And member of the Village Council of the Village of Payless Park.
And member of the Village Council of the Village of Payless Park.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. And now, if we could please have the village clerk, Marie, uh, Aragoni.
No. Hold together, hold together.
Rebecca, Rebecca.
You want me to walk with you?
Please come take your seat.
We're here now. Caragoni, if you could please raise your right hand.
I, Marie, uh, Aragoni, having been elected to the office of village clerk for the Village of Payless Park, Cook County, Illinois, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and will uphold and enforce the statutes of the State of Illinois, the resolutions and ordinances of the Village of Payless Park, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of office of clerk for the Village of Payless Park, according to the best of my ability, so help
And now, Mayor-elect Nicole Milovich Walters. I, Nicole Milovich Walters.
I, Nicole Milovich Walters.
Having been elected to the office of mayor of the Village of Payless Park.
Having been elected to the office of mayor of the Village of Payless Park.
Cook County, Illinois.
Cook County, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And will uphold and enforce the statutes of the State of Illinois.
And will uphold the resolutions and statutes of the State of Illinois.
And the resolution and ordinances of the Village of Payless Park.
And the resolutions and ordinances of the Village of Payless Park.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties as the office of mayor.
And faithfully will discharge my duties of office of mayor.
And member of the Village Council.
And member of the Village Council.
Of the Village of Payless Park.
Of the Village of Payless Park.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
You get a hug too. I'm not leaving you out.
Ah.
Don't forget me. Of course not. I could never forget you.
If ever I would leave you.
Oh, wow. Chair sits a little low, Jen. I'm gonna have to raise this up.
Debbie hangs the head that wears.[1602.24][1602.34][laughter]
Well, I guess at this time, I give a little background and history about how they get their jobs. Um, except where candidates for Commissioner are required to run for a specific office, the council. At the regular meeting, the first regular meeting, after an election of a member of members, shall designate by a majority of vote, one Commissioner to be Commissioner of Accounts and Finances, one to be Commissioner of Public Health and Safety, one to be Commissioner of Streets and Public Improvement, who ex officio shall be Commissioner of Public Works, and one to be Commissioner of Public Property. This designation may be changed by the council whenever it appears that the public service would be benefited thereby. The mayor shall be Commissioner of Public Affairs. So, I would support a motion by somebody to appoint, uh, Commissioner G. Darrell Reed to Accounts and Finances, Commissioner Dan Polk to Public Health and Safety, which is the police department.
Oh, really?
Yes, of course, of course.
Wish they'd have told me that 20 years ago.
Commissioner Mike Wade to Public Property and Buildings, and new Commissioner Rebecca Patan to Streets, Public Improvement, and Recreation.
So moved.
Second.
Having a motion and a second. I've never said that before. It's kind of fun. I've always heard him say it. Um, I, any questions, comments, any complaints? All right. Uh, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
And Mayor Milovich Walters.
All right, the next item on the agenda. Thank you, everyone, for taking your positions, and, um, now we will reconfirm the appointment of the Village Manager, Village Engineer, and Village Attorney. The village appoints a Village Manager, Village Engineer, and Village Attorney to provide professional services to the village. Such appointments are made at the time of the swearing-in of each new council. A formal contract amendment for the Village Manager will be brought forward at the June 12, 2023 Village Council meeting. I seek a motion to confirm the appointment of the Village Support Staff, Richard B. Bame, Village Manager, Mike Sabrava, Village Engineer, and Klein Thorpe Jenkins Limited, Village Attorneys.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Oh, yeah, we have a, I, I have to pay attention now, huh? Um, we have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
And Mayor Milovich Walters.
Yes. Um, as we said, all our announcements are ready. Um, I just would like to, um, ask if my two daughters could grab those plants that are over there and just bring them up for me, please. Thank you. Before citizens and visitor comment period, I just want to... Before citizens and visitor comment period, I just want to thank the new Commissioners to taking this wild ride with me and committing to four years to being a part of this. And this little plant is a token of what we're gonna grow together, and hopefully we'll plant this, and in four years, we can see how much it has grown. And there is one for Mayor Mahoney, because your roots are always here, even though you've left this chair.
Ooh, next turn of the phrase.
Ah, thank you, I can be punny. And now it's time for citizens and visitors comment period. If anybody would like to make a comment, we may not speak back. That is how this works, but if we know what you're talking about and can answer your question now, we will. So would anybody like to come up and speak? You're welcome to say thank you to John, if you'd like, at this point.
Cuts into cookie time.
But yes, let's just call it an end, right? All right. Well, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
Having had a motion and a second, would the clerk please call a roll?
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, and that concludes our meeting. Please join us for cake and Mayor's Choice Ice Cream. Plush Horse made a special ice cream.